One, and welcome to the Monomoy Regional School District meeting for Thursday, January 28th. It is 6:31 PM, and I am calling the meeting to order. Because we are half partially remote, we will have to do a roll call vote. This meeting is being held partially remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts, March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A Section 20. So we're going to start in the Zoom room, and if you could say your name and present. Sharon, we'll start with you.
Sharon Stout, present.
Thank you. Joanne? And Joanne, you'll have to come off mute. Joanne Sheehan, present. Thank you. Joe?
Joseph Paul Arciello, present.
Thank you, Joseph Paul. Jackie?
Jacqueline Macy Zebra Long, present.
Thank you. Meredith?
Meredith Henderson, present.
Come on.
Nancy Scott, present.
Harry?
Robert Terrace Russell, present.
And Tina Marie James, present. All right, we have a full house. Wonderful. First order of business, approval of minutes from January 14th. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Jackie and Nancy has seconded any discussion. All right, seating done. We're going to move to a vote to approve, starting in the Zoom room. Joanne, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Thank you. Sharon?
Aye.
Thank you. Joe?
Joe Arciello, aye.
All right, great. Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. Wonderful. And next is public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Additional time at the discretion of the chairperson. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening? All right, seating done. Whoops, sorry. Do we have somebody? Oh, yes. Oh, Holly, hello, welcomes.
I made it.
Oh, thank you so much. If you could just say your name, and I think, um, your town address. Did she have to do the address? Okay. So Holly, if you don't mind just saying your name and then just your address and the town.
Okay, I'm Holly Graves Newton, and my address is 62 Norris Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I had to write this down, so bear with me as I don't look at you. As a parent with four children, moving to the Monomoy School District was a bit unnerving. We were pretty embedded in our old school district, so I had not really heard much about Monomoy. Who was Dr. Carpenter, anyway? I attended the school-wide meeting in August to see exactly what the plan was to keep the kids safe while learning, just in case I ever thought to put my kids in person. Dr. Carpenter had a lot of great ideas, but I was pretty skeptical. He seemed to put the health and well-being of my children, or the children first, but I wasn't sure if that would truly happen. At the beginning of the school year, I had three fully remote Harvard Elementary students and one high school student who was hybrid. My high schooler was one of the first, well, was the first cohort to transition to fully remote. I was pretty discouraged by the timing and how quickly it happened, but what really encouraged me was how the school and the superintendent and district responded to the positive COVID outbreak. I watched the district put my kids' health before anything, even the political backlash that might occur because of this decision. I attended the second meeting, and I asked Dr. Carpenter what he had learned from the pivot at the high school, what was he going to do differently? And what I then encountered as a parent was a humble superintendent honestly discussing what they had done right and what they had done wrong, and how they were going to fix it. I realized at that point I was dealing with the real deal. He was a superintendent, not a politician. He had my kids' interests at heart. I've since watched Dr. Carpenter put aside politics and pressure from the community and put the kids of our district first. He has proven over and over again, the kids of this district are his first priority. Sure, education is his main focus, but from my perspective as a parent, that has never interfered with his decision about the health and wellness of the students during this pandemic. I'm not saying I agree with all of the decisions he's made, but what I am saying is I'm proud. He is my kid's superintendent. He is a true man of character. He makes solid kid-focused decisions. And honestly, he's the man my two young boys could look up to when they get to decide what kind of man they really want to be. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. Thank you, Principal Holder. Thank you, Principal Police. Thank you for putting my kids first during this pandemic and making me a proud Monomoy parent.
Thank you very much, Holly. Anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? All right, wonderful. So we will move on. Moving next into student representative, Ms. Amy Hinesley, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me back once again. I hope you all had a wonderful holiday break and are enjoying 2021 so far. Despite being all online for a short while, we at the high school are back to hybrid and have a lot, there has been a lot going on with the student body. Six students auditioned for the senior Southeast Massachusetts District Virtual Music Festival this year, and were all accepted. In chorus, we were represented by Kira Ferris, Amy Peterson, Phoebe Gill, Orla Delaney, and Annalise Landelier. In band, we were represented by trombone, Edgeryn Wright. In December, the Interact Club volunteered at the Capabilities Farm, helping out cleaning, organizing, and all sorts of other tasks. Later, they worked on holiday cards for residents of Liberty Commons and clients of the Harvest Council on Aging to bring tidings of good cheer to our local seniors. They're now working on a Valentine project. Sophomores Isabel Fleeger, Alexa Schneberger, and Allison Morris won Cape Cod Chronicles Annual Christmas Story Contest and had their stories published in the newspaper. At the beginning of this month, Ms. Forte Doyle's Distance Learning Seminar students met with Staff Sergeant Davis of the U.S. Marine in an effort to learn about racial, gender, and LGBTQ equities in the Marine Corps. Similarly, just a few days ago, students of the Distance Learning Seminar were able to virtually meet with State Senator Julian Seer to discuss equal rights issues. He was extremely nice and offered a great perspective to help us deepen our understanding of these issues. Students, more students recently auditioned for the spring production of Alice in Wonderland, and we're looking forward to watching them onstage or virtually this spring. After much effort from one of last year's Blue Team eighth-grade civics classes, the Route 137 Bridge over Route 6 will be named the Hidden Moons Memorial Bridge. Bill H. 4761 was enacted by the Massachusetts Legislature on December 29th and signed by Governor Baker on January 6th. A naming ceremony will be coming up in the future. Sophomores and juniors were able to prepare for future assessments on January 26th when they took the PSAT around the school. And January's Chatham Rotary Student of the Month was Senior Brianna Nataro. At the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration sponsored by the NOSA Interfaith Council and St. Joan of Arc Church, MRHS was represented by seniors Davine Wilson and Bradley Alexis on a panel discussion, and juniors Eva Booth, Michelle Gennarazzo, and Bryn Dobbs, who read poetry. Best Buddies joined the UNIFINE Competitive Strength and Conditioning Program, and were able to begin meeting to work out and have fun on the turf to stay in shape during these times. Winter sports have started on our in full swing with basketball, Boys and Girls, and Boys and Girls Hockey. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
All right, hold on one second. Any questions, comments for Amy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Amy.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful. And Amy, if you, hold on one second. Let me just move into the next item of business. If you just want to stick over there and don't leave the ring, please. And moving into the next section, Reports and Discussions, is the Superintendent Scholar Award for Academic Excellence. Dr. Carpenter?
Sure. So this is my annual pleasure. And so we don't want Amy to go anywhere because this year we will be giving, we'll be giving Amy the Superintendent's Award for Academic Excellence. And the award itself is, is based on students have to be in the top tier of their class and have to have contributed to the, in terms of leadership and the social fabric of the school and community. So I have the great pleasure to honor and maybe embarrass Amy here by reading to her the kind words that Ms. Police shared as part of her recommendation for Amy for this. So she wrote a lot, so this might take a little while. So first, it says, Ms. Police wrote, "It's a tremendous honor to write this letter of recommendation for Amy Hinesley. While many letters will come across your desk during the application season, I can assure you that Amy will rank as one of the finest. It is impossible to quantify the setbacks and challenges our students have experienced in the last nine months, but I can, or but what I can measure is continuous growth and perseverance Amy has demonstrated during her time at Monomoy Regional High School. Her record of academic success is impeccable, and as is her leadership, civic involvement, global awareness commitments, and her legacy is one of the most impressive that she's ever seen in her lengthy professional career. She's observed Amy through the lens of the Director of Guidance, Assistant Principal, and currently the Principal. She classifies Amy as a curious, inquisitive learner who is constantly seeking to make connections, interlearning with the world around her. She exhibits a work ethic that is second class to none, which has firmly planted her as the number one student in her graduating class. What often goes unnoticed is Amy's sacrifice and it takes to achieve that level of success. Oftentimes, Amy's world revolves around late evenings doing homework, competing in athletic events, performing in the musical productions, studying for an AP exam, or engaging in a research for her Global Studies Diploma Capstone Project. As reflected in Amy's transcript, she's taken the school's most demanding courses, including two courses at the local community college in the summer. And both her sophomore and junior year, not only did she excel, she was nearly flawless. Amy is without question driven by intellectual curiosity and thirst for knowledge. She's never one to miss an assignment or ask for extensions, even when life is putting her in competing directions. Last spring, our lives came to a crashing halt as communities were forced to shut down due to the pandemic. Schools were required to pivot to remote learning, a model of instruction that was extremely challenging, left thousands of students without connection to school for months. Amy never stopped learning. She attended every remote learning session from March to June, sometimes as the only student in attendance. Her AP scores last spring were evidence of her commitment, earning two fives and a four on her exams. Her teachers describe her as a tenacious talent that understands the most complex problems. I fully expect Amy to hold the number one ranking in her class and will witness her deliver the valedictorian speech at graduation this June. This achievement's marked by four years of dedication and commitment to learning beyond just the classroom. In addition to Amy's outstanding AP scores, SAT scores, MCAS scores, and transcript is a student who is truly gifted across the curriculum. Amy identifies herself as someone who loves reading and often finds herself lost in philosophy and fantasy novels. But to her credit, she spends an equal amount of time immersed in musical theater, band, and athletics. Amy has a keen interest in politics and is deeply rooted in passion in improving social justice across the globe. Her studies are deeply connected to science, and she envisions herself working as a global field research scientist. It's quite fitting that, that she's thinking about that amidst this pandemic. Amy diligently landed an internship last summer at the Atlantic White Shark Conservancy that was running virtually, a virtual reality lab, as well as assisting in the education of the public on shark activity on Cape Cod. Amy's activities are not captured by a transcript, as she is much deeper than grades and scores. To name a few, she is the President of National Honor Society, President of the Student Council, Captain of the Monomoy Regional High School Mock Trial Team, Student Representative to the School Committee, Captain of the Monomoy Regional High School Field Hockey Team, President of the Interact Club, President of Best Buddies. She is also a passionate member of the Stand Students Taking Action Now Club, Political Action Club, and integral contributor to the student-led Student Justice Task Force. It should come as no surprise that Amy was the recipient of the Harvard Junior Book Award, the History Department Award, and the Richard Gilder History Book Award. Impressively, Amy will graduate with a Global Studies Diploma with distinction. Our school's Global Studies Program offers students the opportunity to go beyond the high school curriculum to make connections with the larger world. Students who compete the program or complete the program will learn to understand, care, and act on issues of global concern. Culmination of her program is the awarding of the Global Studies Diploma graduation. I had the pleasure of traveling to Tanzania, Africa with Amy during her sophomore year as part of our Global Studies Program. As we sat together in homes and families and villages in Dar es Salaam, I witnessed Amy begin to establish her place in the world. It was at that moment that Amy became comfortable standing confidently alone, no longer willing to follow the crowd. In conclusion, you have the opportunity to receive an extraordinary young woman with tremendous curiosity and intellectual promise. She's absolutely prepared to meet the demands of the most rigorous colleges and university environments. Her passion and drive, combined with intelligence and maturity, will leave her well-prepared to solve problems and persevere through challenges with a conscientious mind and a level head. And I was talking with Amy beforehand, and Amy will be attending Cornell University in the fall.
That's okay. And you'll hear us joining us. You may have seen them behind you.
I have so many goosebumps.
Great job. Wow.
Congratulations.
Amy, do you want to say anything? Or you'll just take it with the motion and that's all? That's fine. Well, Amy, I have the pleasure of just saying I've seen you grow because I've known you since, I don't know, Girl Scouts. We backed you up.
So I'm not, I'm not at all surprised by what all we heard tonight, and congratulations. Look forward to seeing you come here for the rest of the year, and best wishes at Cornell.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. I don't know. Sorry.
No, that's perfectly fine. You're doing enough. It's good.
Parents, do you, anything you want to say?
You said domination.
Now, Amy, you all, you have great experience, and we realize Miss Police has been more of a counselor, a principal. She's got a really great vibe, I think. A lot of times I go, I don't know what's happening here.
Thank you. Ms. Police, I don't know if you could hear that, but you're getting lots of kudos from parents of Amy.
She puts a lot of time into it.
Yeah. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. Thank you so much. And congratulations again, Amy.
Great job.
All right, wonderful. Excellent. All right, moving to the next item under Reports and Discussions is FY '22 Budget Update. Michael? And as you're getting set up, I just, I'm not sure with the mics. Was your mic on by chance? Okay. Because I, so just for everybody in the listening audience, I think, are we going to, whether there be anything on the website for Amy with all of the wonderful stuff that you read? Okay. Okay. So anybody in the listening audience that couldn't hear everything, it will be posted on the website, what Scott read this week, along with files. All right, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Charles Andrew McMillan for the record. So I'm just going to give another, I can probably manage, I just like it. I'm going to give another, an update on the budget in response to some of the questions that you had last, last meeting and some questions we've had since then. Hey, we also received yesterday the state's preliminary estimates of Chapter 78 aid and net school spending requirements for FY '22, and I've included some information on that at the end of these slides. So information you've not yet received. We only got them yesterday. So first, an update on the budget. So I guess the first update is there is no update because we've not changed the actual budget figure since your last meeting. You'll be pleased to hear it's still that 1.5% increase. We have had our excess and deficiency certified. So the auditors and then the state gave it the thumbs up. So it is just, just earned 2.1 million, which is slightly over the 5% threshold, which you're only allowed to keep 5% of your operating, of your budget in excess and deficiency, but it's only over by $79,000. So we would have to apply that to this year's assessment. But as you know, we've already applied $850,000, so we're way ahead of what we needed to do. But it's good to have that certified, and that means those funds are available as we're using $500,000 of them to offset FY '22's budget. So one of the questions we had was around class sizes, which is here. So the next couple of slides provide information on class sizes. So I provided the planned sections and class size numbers for FY '22. And to provide some context, I've compared them to numbers that we had as budgeted for FY '21. So I understand it will cause some frustration, but these FY '21 figures are, in some regards, hypothetical because these are the ones that we're being, were being prepared back in February, January, February of '20, in preparation for a year. It never happened because they were in preparation for FY '21 before COVID hit. So some of these numbers were still in development. Then COVID came along, and a completely new budget was developed for a completely new set of circumstances. However, with those caveats and some more, it should give you a sense of the shift from FY '21 to the FY '22 budget. So I would say from this information, there's a couple of high-level messages. The first is that we are keeping class sizes at or around the target number that the district has made clear in all the budgets, which is 18 plus or minus one at the elementary schools and 19 plus or minus two at the Menlo High School. And then the other big shift, the big change, is that we have been able to reduce three sections at Chatham Elementary School while keeping numbers within that target range. And that just reflects that enrollment shift. We are showing one reduction here at Harwich, but that is one of those hypothetical ones because that was carried in the budget in January of FY '21. It was never actually implemented. It might not even have been implemented, but it was in the budget that we started with. And so when we come up with a new budget, we're showing that reduction. But it's not, that's one of those changes that won't feel like a reduction because it was never really there. I know. It's horrible, but. Hey, the next slide is the middle school and high school. There's obviously less reductions there, although we are looking to reduce one grade five section in light of the numbers that were seen there. And then these are the position changes. So here, as I keep going on about, this is slightly more complicated than a normal year. So there's three tables on this slide. I'm going to start with the blue one on the right of the slide. So these are the positions that were already vacant this year. So these positions have not been filled this year, and we did not plan to fill next year. The savings from these positions being vacant helped us to respond to additional COVID needs, and we hired some, you know, one-year contracts to help us fill in COVID needs that we're not planning to renew once we go into next year, and hopefully we are out of that COVID response. And, and once we're out of COVID, but in light of enrollment and focus, we don't plan to fill those aid positions. So then if we go back over to the orange table, that's more of a traditional reduction, although again, even then, because we have some positions in remote learning, we have some positions in the district, it's kind of, it's a real jumble at the moment. And particularly that grade two position, again, I did speak to the principal today. She said, Michael, you have to be really clear. That's not a real cut because there's nobody in that position right now. So it won't, again, it's not being filled this year. And then the green table is the positions that we're planning to add. So the net impact on the staffing we have now is actually, is almost zero once you take out that grade two position. Do you want me to keep going, or does anybody have questions on this?
Anybody? We can pause. Any questions?
All right.
All right, continue. Thank you.
So over the next seven slides, I've provided some further information on the priorities which we have been able to include in this year's budget and the priorities which thus far we haven't. I've also included a short description of the impact of those priorities, the impact that those priorities we are funding will have, and the impact of not funding the priorities we're not having will also have. And we're not going to go through all of them. There's a lot of information there, and you can read at your leisure. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help now or at any point. I think the highlights in terms of the priorities we're funding, the retaining the additional full-time nurses that we added this year as we continue to respond to the ongoing impact of COVID, the math interventionist at the high school, and then reading specialist at the middle school. And I'm also pleased to see that we are able to fund replacement, in some cases, and purchase new textbooks and other places, textbooks, which are critical to ongoing education in the schools. So it is, I think it's important to note that it's not as simple to say that, well, if we don't hire all those, do all these things, then we'll have this saving. I mean, first of all, I'd make the argument that some of these are critical to then, what we're delivering within the buildings. But also, on a more practical note, some of them are, we are able to buy them because, we are able to pursue these because of reductions we're making, but the reductions also require these additions to make. So if we cut some of these additions, we need to look, go back and look at some of the other positions or supplies and things that we've cut in order to pay for them. Does that make sense? They're kind of, they're linked, so we can't just take one away and not go back and look at the other ones. I mean, like, a really simple example is, let's see, like, the budget sends conversion. This is minor, but we're planning to do some changes with our accounting software, and that will have some savings on the technology we have to provide. So if we don't go ahead with that, then we won't realize those savings. And then, so the green tables were the ones that we are funding. The blue tables are those priorities which we are not funding. The blue tables are those priorities which we are not funding at the moment. Let's see, let me get my notes on these ones. So again, oh, just one thing to note, these are not in any order of priority at the moment, these are just all of them together. And the ones that we've been most talking about in the district this, over the last couple of weeks are the team chair position, the speech and language position, and the high school special education position. And as I noted at the end of this section, we are working as a team still to see if we are able to fund some of these items either through grants or other available funds or by making other reductions within the budget. So it's kind of, it's an ongoing job to try and get the most that we can out of the money we have. And I think. All right, so that's it. I've got another few slides on the state. The state budget information that came out yesterday, but I'm happy to take any questions if there are any.
So, yeah, let me just pause. So you said you had more?
Yes, yes, I have some more slides. You don't have them, but I just, we only put them together today, so.
That's fine, thank you. Before we move into that, anybody have questions about what's been presented so far? And in the Zoom room, I cannot see you, so if you have a question, just let me know.
Sharon, I do.
Okay, Sharon, go ahead.
So first of all, it's very hard to hear on the Zoom room. What Michael's saying is, I'm very grateful for the visuals that helps. Back where you've had the number of children in a classroom. I've mentioned this in other years, you weren't here, Michael, but that average student bothers me very much. And I don't like to hear about average, I like to hear about the low and high. For instance, if a third-grade class had 18, but some class had 23, that's the kind of thing that's important for me to know, because I don't want to see a lot of inequity. I know that there's a, there's some situation between Chatham and Harwich that there's not much what we can do about. But if there is what I would consider maybe too many kids in a classroom for teachers to teach us to mullay, that would be very important to me. Do we know what those are, or is that something I have to find out at another time?
Sharon, the principals go and they'll, they will put together classes that are within one student of each other at the beginning of every school year. Over the course of the year, there might be slight attrition of students. So your class may gain a student, a class may lose a student, but, you know, but they're, they're all going to be within one at the beginning of every school year.
Sharon, can you hear me?
You're also hard, you're stuck, but from what I've got with this is the principals put it together. So would you say to me that there's not more than two in any, from the high to the low, there wouldn't be more? And I'm not talking about high school when the kids pick classes, because I understand how that can be very low or maybe a little bit high. But for these grade levels, would there be like no more than two different, you know, in the range?
Mary, can we defer to the Zoom room?
Oh, do me too.
Mary, can you answer that one?
Mary Aldach, I think you're being, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time just with the audio. If somebody could please repeat the question?
I, I guess.
I can hear you fine here, can you hear me?
I, I wasn't really able to hear Superintendent Carpenter very well. I think the question is how we determine what is the optimal class size?
My question is that, like, in our classrooms now.
Yep.
And now's probably not a good example, because we're in COVID and people are in and out. But generally, in a third grade or first grade classroom, the difference starting from the year off, would that be no more than like two difference from the lowest to the highest?
Okay, so just the range of class size that we see across the grades?
Across each individual grade, like, I don't mean that, I, I mean, I understand if you have a higher fifth grade or something, or lower, that it might be slightly bigger or littler. But I'm talking about anything that's much more than two or three kids.
Right, so when, when we do placement in the springtime, we're creating heterogeneous classes. And class size is the, the target, the target number we have. And, you know, we just take the number of children in the cohort, divide by the number of sections, and then place children very carefully based upon their needs and, and match. And so, and I'm sure I speak for Dr. Millen as well, we're looking to balance class size. And typically, we're looking at plus or minus one across the grades. Say five third-grade classes with maybe four of them have 17 and one of them has 18. So we're always looking at keeping that balance. And of course, with COVID, our numbers are down due to social distancing. We can't, at Harwich Elementary, I haven't been able to put more than about 16 students in a, one of our regular classrooms.
Now, that's very helpful for the kids that.
Sharon, can you hear me? Before you move to your next question, I, we have Dr. Millen in the room with us. I'm going to ask her to address this as well, so go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robin Millen, the principal at Chatham Elementary School. I agree with Ms. Aldach, we do do the same thing. We take the number of students that we have in the classrooms and we divide them out as equally as possible, as long as the, you know, we do it with boys and girls, making sure that's as equal as possible, and then any other needs or anything like that. So typically, it's plus or minus one or two. Again, it just, just depends on move-ins and move-outs. Sometimes we have a large number of children around October and November in Chatham move in, and sometimes we have a large number move out. So sometimes that tilts it, but on average, it's usually, you know, plus or minus one or two.
And so the follow-up is that, let's suppose we don't have COVID affecting us very much next year, and the kids that are remote come back. Have that, has that been accounted for in these numbers?
Yes, so that, that is the scenario which is reflected in these numbers. So these are our non-COVID, non-remote learning numbers.
Thank you very much. That's my question on that, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Anybody else in the Zoom room? Joanne or Joe? Okay, can all of you hear me? Okay. All right, so it might be that this evening, we're going to have to pull our mics right up to us, just so everybody knows. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just going to minimize the people in the Zoom room again, so that you can see the slides.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is just a quick update on information we received from the state yesterday on the Chapter 70 funding and net school spending requirements. So I always love a good graphic, so I started one here, which is really just to show that our budget figure, as you know, is made up of, is paid for through the assessments and other offsetting revenue. So if the budget doesn't change and the offsetting revenue increases, that reduces the assessments a little. And the budget number hasn't changed, so this is still the same figure that we had, you voted as a draft budget at your last meeting. But with the information from the state yesterday, we have seen modest increases in Chapter 70, charter school tuition, but that's only $103, so not even really modest. And a slight change, increase in the transportation of reimbursement. So that's $70,000, so that shifts that line up a little bit and reduces the overall amount of the budget that has to be paid for through the assessments, but just by $70,000.
Because I asked a question of you via email, but I just, I'm just going to put it out.
Yeah, please.
So I had a question, went back to, well, no, this is a circuit breaker, I'm sorry, so we're not there yet.
Okay, I do have a good point for us to talk about that.
Okay, good.
Coming up. All right, so then where there is a big change, which is what we expected in our figures, is in the state's calculation of the required local minimum contribution, which is required of each town. The way the assessment works is, this is calculated first and before the rest of the funds are separated out between Harwich and Chatham. So in FY21, you can see we had just over 13.1 million for Harwich and 4.1 million for Chatham. And that's what we used at our first draft of our budget. When we presented the budget, we did have a projected scenario of how the minimum local contribution might go. And we had envisaged Harwich increasing to 13.4, almost 5 million, but in Chatham, a smaller increase. While the, actually, the change from the state so far in the preliminary FY22 figure has seen a small increase for Harwich, but a significant decrease for Chatham. I know, can't catch a break. So, so I know, so I started, I was like, this is great, it's a small increase for Harwich, I can go home, everyone will be happy. And then the Chatham figure was this $334,000 reduction. So that does, essentially does the same as a big increase for Harwich would have done, it just shifts the onus over to Harwich. And what that means is, so then when you put that into our assessment process, just as we have done in previous versions of the, of the figures, you have a 3.7% increase, almost 3.8% increase for Harwich, which is over a million dollars, and a $220,000 decrease for Chatham of 2.5, a decrease of 2.5%. I'll just let that sink in for a second. Yeah. So this is, you know, this is early days, and we've just, you know, we've just received this information and are just processing it. But, you know, that's, you know, we've already got a relatively low budget increase of 1.5%, but the process you push it through makes some, for some difficult reading. There was a couple of other points, I just wanted the information released by the state. Our school choice out tuition, which is part of the budget, did come down below what we budgeted as fewer students go to schools, choose to go to schools out of the district and instead stay in Menlo High. But we know that is a figure that can change, so we're not going to make any adjustments quite yet and keep an eye on that. And meanwhile, our charter school tuition has gone up a little bit. And, you know, again, we'll keep an eye on both of these as we go over the next few months. Circuit Breaker. So I should have brought that slide, actually, I forgot about it.
Do you want me to ask my question?
Sure, go for it.
So I actually asked Michael, two years ago, when I first came onto the school committee, I remember we had two really big out-of-district expenses that fell apart. So I asked Michael, when would that relief come, because it was, I guess, two years. So anyway, and now you can explain what you said to me.
Okay, so Circuit Breaker works in a three-year cycle, essentially is how we manage it here. So, so this is year, in year one, you spend the money, so you provide services to students, and you submit a report to the state of that expenditure. In year two, the state reimburses you a percentage of that expenditure. And then from the minute of receiving that, you have, you can either spend that money in year two or in year three. And the state, and the district's policy or procedure has to be, has been to spend it in year three. So you, you spend the money, you purchase the services in year one, you receive the reimbursement in year two, and you spend the reimbursement in year three. So for example, when this increase in allocated funds for Circuit Breaker, so that is expenditure, a reimbursement that will be received in FY22, but we will spend, so it will offset our budget in FY23. Does that make sense? So you do, there's, you could spend the money in year two. The reason we don't is that, you know, you're receiving it that year, so if there's something up with the state budget, or if your numbers are down, you're kind of, there's a lot more uncertainty, so you might offset the budget with a projected Circuit Breaker amount, because you think you're going to receive it in year two, and then you actually receive less, and that puts you in a bind, because now you have to make up those funds from somewhere else. And instead, we have the certainty, because, so for example, now, I know how much we're receiving this year, and that's what I'm going to use to offset next year's budget, so you have that certainty. It also gives you, if there is a big increase in your, in your, out-of-district expenditure, you could always use the money you're receiving in year two. So you could use the money you're receiving that year and spend it straight away if you had a big increase that had not been budgeted. So it gives you that fallback as well. Does that make sense?
Any questions?
Yes.
Michael, actually, the only question was, could you send those slides to us tomorrow?
Yes, absolutely, I will. I was like, yes.
Thank you very much.
I finished them like a couple hours ago.
No problem, I just, I want to take a look at them again.
Yeah, please. We'll put them on the website as well, I'll work with Joy, and we'll get them on the website, so they're available for everybody. So, and then the last thing I wanted to mention was that the state also released the second round of funding for the coronavirus relief funding that this, the federal government had approved. So, so that will help to offset some of our coronavirus relief-related expenditure. And the state did say that towns would be allowed to offset the increase in their assessment, not in their assessment, sorry, in their minimum local contribution using those funds. So essentially, the state gives the funds to us, but then the municipalities can choose to tell us, we'll use a portion of that to offset the increase in our minimum local contribution. Does that make sense? It's kind of, it's a little unusual, people like, all the business managers are really unhappy, because they don't like things to be complicated. And this is definitely a little more complicated, because normally, these things don't get involved with each other. But so the state's giving us this money and saying, you, your municipality can choose to apply a small amount of that to make up for your minimum local contribution. Big round of it. This is where it comes back to the point that the increase in the minimum local contribution for our towns was small this year. So unfortunately, that's another thing where it's just unfortunate, where the numbers shake out, is because if this had been two years ago, when the increases were large, then that is our funding, the additional funding would have been, had a big impact. But because the local contribution increase is small, and actually, the problem we're having is, it's not the increase, it's the decrease that's the problem. There is a limit to how much we can use that. Does that make sense as well? Sorry, there's a lot of information, but we've just been kind of getting to grips with all of it today. My pleasure.
Any questions from those of you in the Zoom room? Sharon, Joe, Joanne? Well, I see Joe, go ahead.
Just one briefest of brief comments. Michael, thank you so much for the readability of the material that you have provided. It was a, almost a pleasure to go through this. Thank you.
My excellent, I'm pleased.
All right, no other questions? Are you finished with that part?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're ready, I guess, for the next item. But before we move into the next item, I just wanted to remind everyone, including the public, that we will have our public, our hearing, our budget hearing, our public hearing, the next meeting, which is February 11th at 6 o'clock. So just wanted to, for those of you in the public. It'll be February 11th, 6 o'clock, and it'll be one hour right before our next school committee. Okay, moving on to quarterly finance report.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do our quarterly finance report, we've just got to the end of quarter two at the end of December, and I put together this report. You know, it may come as a surprise, but I used to be known as a very pessimistic business manager. And I used to always say, things are terrible, you know, we are going to be lucky to get through the year. But this year, it makes me very nervous. But this year, our finances look in good shape, and I think that's for a couple of reasons, I know. It's for a couple of reasons. I'm already having sleepless nights, the time I'm standing up here saying, I got it wrong. But there's a couple of things that are happening. One is that the district made a lot of changes, and that comes back to that blue table that I showed you in my slides earlier. The district made a lot of changes, or. I showed you in my slides earlier, the district made a lot of changes or didn't fill positions because we knew this was coming. So in order to respond to coronavirus, the district made some wise decisions that put us, that were difficult at the time, and have put us in a good shape for this year. And COVID continues to put some restrictions on our activities, so there are distant things that aren't happening, like field trips, and some things that we would like to happen aren't happening, like hiring of substitutes, which we are trying to get, but are difficult to get, so, you know, there are some savings here that we would rather not have, but as a result, the budget is in reasonable shape. Another thing is that some of the additional expenditure we have had has been accounted for through the coronavirus relief funding we've received from the state and the federal government, so those things are helping to put us in a okay position. So today, we have five point four percent of the budget unexpended and unencumbered, which compares to four point eight at this point in FY twenty, and at five point one percent in FY nineteen. So just before I wrap up with what we're asking this presentation, I have summarized each category, each cost center, and I also provided a report which breaks each cost center down into the functions, just to give you a sense of what's within that cost center and category. A couple of highlights I wanted to point out, one, at the moment, we are showing a deficit in our school choice category, however, this was prior to the state's releasing their most recent information, they released it on December thirty-first, and then we updated the figures after that, and once, that's how much we have to pay for students going out, and once that information is updated, we actually have a surplus in that account of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our out-of-district is currently over encumbered, but we are watching, you know, as you know, those figures can change, and we are, we are watching them closely to see how they'll pan out over the next couple of months. Similarly, we are seeing an increase in our custodian substitutes in overtime, the tech support budget, and in medical and health supplies, all related to COVID expenses, and expenses we will be able to offset with the ESA grant that came out yesterday. There are, there is, so there's a couple of places that we're hoping to get your approval for transfers. One is, I've moved a couple of salaries around to better reflect the state's chart of accounts guidance, and I've listed them on page four of the handout. One is to move some community engagement costs from clerical and technical accounts to parent liaison services, and also to move our IT directors' related costs from networking and telecommunications to IT leadership. So then the big issue, the big request now is that in light of the financial position of the district, we would like to request your approval that we move, that we proceed with the purchase of the new E L A curriculum that we had previously discussed. So there's two requests, one is that you approve, you know, we're just at the start, we've not agreed contracts or anything like that, so we're not at the point of having you agree a contract, we would just like your approval to proceed with that purchase, and also to approve the transfer of funds, both for the positions that I mentioned and to allow us to pay for the E L A curriculum.
Okay. Before we move into that, questions, Sharon?
So, let's just start with the cost centers. I'm a bit confused about this. I always get confused with numbers when they don't, I'm not sure what's in them, so I want the one thousand account, where you want to move the, where you want to move Joy Jordan's community coordinator out of. So, in that, does that have the special ed director in it and all her staff?
So...
I see you say business and superintendent. For some reason, I thought that all the administration was in there, but I'm incorrect, I think.
So, yeah, let's see, so I did provide, one of the reports I included in these papers was a breakdown by function, so it gives you a bit more detail on what is within each of these cost centers. Let me just get it for you.
So the curriculum director and this bed director I consider as district, district leadership, for some reason, I used to think that all the principals were in there too, but I guess they must be in a different cost center, but those people are, I don't, I guess Mark Smith has his office there, but they're district-wide, so you don't know if they're in there or not?
So, yeah, so, the, so no, so Mark and Melissa are both within instructional leadership?
What number is that?
That's under instruction.
Oh, okay, so Mark's under with the teachers, okay. And what about special ed?
That is also under instruction, yeah.
Okay. And so, then, there's the athletic director, who is an administrator, does she go in in that area too?
No, she's under athletics.
Oh, okay, sorry. And so the IT person is an administrator, and where is it that you want to put him?
Under, so the state, so, we, these chart, this is based on the state's chart of accounts, and they introduced a new account code for instructional leadership, and it is, sorry, I just need to get back to it. It is, yeah, it's also under instruction.
Oh, for IT, okay.
Yeah.
And, and, but you're not putting Joy Jordan in there, you want to put her someplace else?
Yes, under community engagement, but the state calls it parent liaison services.
And on the three thousand one, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. You know, it would be really helpful to have that, whatever that thing is for the state, because sports and finances are my weakness in all of this, and at least the budget, I want to be really proficient in, but if there's something that spells out this more, that would be great, because this is, you know, one of our big things, so it would be helpful to me personally, a lot, thank you.
Sharon, I would be happy to, I'll send you the state's chart of accounts, I will just say, there is some interpretation that has to happen of it, so it's not always, it's not always very clear, but Sharon, in the document that we handed out for this meeting, about, it is about two-thirds of the way through, but it has a list, it's called, what's it called, sorry, expenditure by function, and it shows you, I mean, it doesn't give you quite the level of detail that you're looking for, but it does show you all the main functions under each category. It's on page fifty-five of seventy-one, so.
Page fifty-five of that seventy-nine page thing you...
Yeah, I know, I know. You mean, you haven't read it all, Sharon?
I was just hoping there'd be one sheet that would explain that.
Yeah, there is not, trust me, because even the state's one is like twenty pages. This is actually only two, so if you get to page fifty-five, it's only two pages long. No, I know, no, there's, they're not numbered, it's just on page fifty-five.
So Sharon, did you get your question answered?
Yeah, I, I guess I thought, I don't know if things have changed, or if I just wasn't sure about what was under which cost center, I've just been reading line items for so long. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so yes, the short answer is yes, things have changed, the state updated the chart of accounts.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? On Nancy?
Just a, more of a, I don't even know what kind of question. If we move forward to, so I understand you're asking for us to vote to just start the process of purchasing the curriculum? So if it ultimately decides to purchase the curriculum, and in, let's say, March or April, and then we determine that we can't do what we want to do with it this summer, because I know that part of purchasing the curriculum was having teachers get together and learn and not be virtual, but be in person, so if we learn that we can't do that, is that okay and we can do it later? Or is it, it's not locking us into something for the summer?
So this vote, this vote wouldn't lock us into it.
No, I know that part, so I guess the next step, so if you decide to, so we give you the authorization to purchase it, you start the process of figuring out how to purchase it, you ultimately decide to purchase it, and then two months from now, we go through what we did a year ago.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that that doesn't impact us in a negative way. Does that make sense?
I'm going to take this one if I can, Mark Smith, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and I'm quite frankly, frankly, I'm getting jealous the amount of time Michael's getting in front of you guys, so I'm going to bump him out of the way. So tomorrow, if you guys approve, I will start the process of reaching out to the rep and, you know, getting our updated quote, and we'll have to start an implementation plan. I do happen to know, just because I'm in a doctoral cohort, and somebody in my doctoral cohort is implementing this particular program in the middle of COVID, so they've made adjustments for their implementation, their training, ideally, we have everybody in person and we'll be able to do it that way, but I think either way, we'll still be able to implement and move forward. Short answer.
Thank you.
And Meredith, a piece of question?
I have kind of a two-part question, so the first is, just because I'm still learning the budget too, this is funds from the FY twenty-one budget, correct?
Yes.
That are sort of available because of things that have moved around and things like that, okay? And then the other piece, which may be a Mark question too, is just, you don't have to, because I, but I just didn't know, I know the process hasn't started, so maybe I shouldn't even ask it, but I'm going to anyway, adjustment to the cost of the program, so like, you're going to reach out to them, like, is there potentially an adjustment and does that affect, because we're going to vote for three hundred and seventy-five thousand to be moved? So is, do we know that that'll at least cover it?
Yes. I mean, yes, so it's, one, two...
Very confident.
Three, four, it's four hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, sorry.
You gave me an, I was like, oh, man.
I'm sorry.
But yes, so...
See, I'm not going to budget.
Quickly. And that is based on the quotes we've had.
Okay, yeah.
And I can just add that last year, when we, when I thought we were all set to go, I had actually talked to Dr. Carpenter about coming, because I had like good news, because we had, we had gotten a, like, it was coming in like significantly, well, not, a good chunk under, so even if you sort of expect for some inflation in costs, just since it's been a year, I think we're still in safe ground with this number, and still might be able to ultimately come in under this number, but I think this gives us the cushion to be comfortable and safe, yes.
Great.
All right, thank you. For those of you in the Zoom room, any questions, are you able to hear what we're talking about over here? Joe, let me go to you.
Just quickly on the technical side of things, Mark Smith has got a lot of reverb and is a little harder to hear, that might be a situation that can be modified by microphone placement, I'm not sure, but everybody else tonight is fine, at least, I'm hearing everybody else fine, this was the only flip that I had.
I think it's just because I don't have an accent, that's probably the problem.
And Sharon, did you have another question?
Yes, I do. Basically, I cannot hear, I can hear you fine, Tina, I can't hear Scott or Michael or Mark Smith, I don't know why it would be different than Joe, but it seems to be, so, so I'm not sure, how much is it that we're trying to get and that we do have this year, and am I understanding this is just going to pay only a portion of the whole thing, and is it certain grades that we're getting stuff for, or I would like a little more detail into this.
So, I'll answer the first question. Sharon, can you hear me now?
I can hear you better, yeah.
Okay, so I'll answer the first couple of questions, and then I'll pass over to Mark. The request here is for the full amount for the implementation this year, so often these programs, I imagine this will be no exception, they have some ongoing costs, so there'll be, you know, we'll have to purchase materials occasionally and so on, but the full implementation costs are included in the four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that are requested for transfer this year.
And that would cover, I don't know if we're doing kindergarten, but that would cover through, I think the top grade we're doing now is grade four?
So I'm going to do my best not to have my Jimi Hendrix reverb, but, so, I, and I'm seeing a little smirk by Mr. Stasiello, so I think I'm doing all right. So, we, yes, that includes a K to four implementation, just as a reminder, it's a, like a comprehensive program, includes reading, writing, language, phonics, has like a plethora of books for classroom libraries, includes an assessment system, and includes somewhere between ten and thirteen days of professional development included in that price for the rollout and the implementation.
Thank you. Sharon, was that heard?
Well, so, Michael, what, if we do this, I'm very nervous because of COVID, and also trying to keep them, whatever it is, one point eight percent budget, how much is going to be left in the E and D, because there, there's still quite a bit of unknowns, plus two areas that you said were more costs than we had with the area?
Yeah, so, sorry, so, yes, oh, that's a good idea. Okay, sorry. All right, so, so, I guess, there's a couple of parts to your question, Sharon, but to take the, one about the over, where we are over budget at the moment, so we just have received, you know, the second round of ESA funding, which is in the region of six hundred thousand dollars to offset COVID expenditures, so, you know, so where we have that increase, that will be, we'll be able to move those expenditures over to the ESA fund, because you're allowed to back, not back day, but it covers the period from, I believe, July thirty, I think is on. So that will resolve those over, those places we're over budget right now, and that will also help with some of those unknowns around COVID, so if there are other, you know, big issues, like we end up back in full remote, or if there are other related costs that we haven't foreseen at this point, we do have those funds to help support with that. And we also have a, our school choice revenue, which we still, we have some small surplus, some surplus in that fund, which will also help with any unknowns that come down the road, that is, so we have a couple of different, you know, sources of funds to support this purchase, you know, to support, to backfill this purchase if there is a problem.
So, Michael, the balance in the E and D fund, is that remaining the same as the start of the year, when we end this year?
So, excess and deficiency is, excess and deficiency is a little tricky to estimate because, so the state, the state, the state tells us how much it is, it's one point, it's two point one million dollars this year, but it just, it's just a, you know, all that means is it's how much money was left at the end of the year, after all your expense, you know, all your revenue was taken into account, and all your expenses, and any, you know, outstanding expenses that were... expenses that were owed but not yet paid, once all that's taken into account, it's how much money you have left over, essentially. I think that's, so, you know, there isn't really, there isn't, there isn't really a excess and deficiency, there's not an excess and deficiency fund anywhere, it's just all the money we have left over adds up to 2.1 million dollars. So next year, they'll do the calculation again, and they'll restart it, and they'll do it again. So, but if I was to forecast where I think we'll come in, I think the fact that we're tracking under budget right now on a number of key areas, and that's why we're comfortable recommending this ELA curriculum, the fact that we're.
Okay, well, that's, that's very, very helpful. I, I have visions of us needing to put those dividers at every kid's desk and all that with this new COVID super whatever it is that's easier to spread, and so you know I have a little bit of a fixation about this COVID stuff. So I, I'm very conservative fiscally. If you feel like we'll have as much ending the year as we had starting the year, is that what you're saying?
If I could, Sharon, let me just see if I'm understanding your questioning. Are you thinking that we're taking new funding? Is that kind of what you're thinking out of the E and D? Because the motion on the table is about transferring, so if you look at page four, it's about transferring and not taking.
Yes, I do see that. I see every day, and these emails come to me, that we need this substitute, that substitute, and all, so I'm just saying I'm very fiscally conservative, that's what's going on here.
I mean.
Because of the E and D, so.
So Sharon, if I can, I mean, I think, I mean, I would be a fool to say that spending $475,000 isn't going to affect your bottom line. Yes, it's a big expenditure, and yes, it will affect how much money we have left at the end of the year, because if we didn't spend $475,000, you'd still have those funds. But, so yes.
Okay, and our, our union is covered through this year, right?
Yes.
Whatever they're going to be doing with all that, that's going to be really next year and further not to do it this year, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I don't know of anything else that's coming up that's predictable, so, okay, but you've helped me a lot. I couldn't understand a lot of that, that's why I had so many questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Anybody else? All right, and it says potential votes, so.
So there's, yeah, so there's two things we'd like to request your approval to. The first is, you know, I mean, this is just, you've been so involved in the ELA curriculum decision-making process, we thought it was appropriate to get your vote to approve us proceeding with that purchase at this time, or proceeding with the project at this time, we're not actually going to make a purchase.
Okay. Uh, Sharon, did you have a question or you want to make the motion?
Uh, motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I would move that the regional school committee approve that the district should proceed with the purchase of a new ELA curriculum.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, so we will move to approve that motion, starting in the Zoom room. Joanne, we'll start with you.
Joanne, aye.
Thank you, Jo.
Joanne, say hello, aye.
Thank you, Sharon.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Now the second, if I could have a motion for the second request, please?
No, so, I said, my suggestion is to approve the transfer of funds between account lines
as detailed in the papers provided to this group.
I'm in.
Madam Chair. Okay, go ahead, Nancy.
I move to approve the following transfers. $26,634 from 1,000.30.1230.200.105.005.0763 to 1,000.30.3100.100.317.005.412, excuse me, 1421. Then, trying to think the best way to do that, $50,000 from 1,000.01.2305.110.404.001.3450. And $75,000 from 1,000.02.2330.300.600.002.3473. So that's a grand total of $475,000 going to 1,000.30.2410.510.600.001.3505.
Excellent.
Could you just repeat that?
Uh, yes.
All right, thank you for the motion, but I'm a second.
Second.
All right, Jackie, seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, we're going to take a vote on that wonderful motion. Uh, finally, Joanne.
Joanne Sheehan, aye.
Thank you, Jo.
Joanne Stasiello, aye.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon Stout, aye.
Wonderful, Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Is that unanimous?
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All righty. Moving to the next item.
Under Reports and Discussions Addressing the Inequalities of the Montomoy Regional School District Regional Agreement Assessments. Okay, so we, at our last meeting on January 14th, we had a lively discussion about the regional agreement assessments, and we agreed that we would put it back on just to have some follow-up discussion. And just a couple of things before we move into that, just a reminder, since we are talking about the regional agreement assessments, that the regional agreement work group will be meeting tomorrow at 2:30 for the purpose of reviewing languaging that has been proposed by our school attorney, so we're going to be reviewing that tomorrow. And then from there, it is the intention to move that document into a joint meeting, of which everyone, we're right now looking at dates, for the school committee, the Chatham Select Board, and the Board, Harvard Board of Selectment, to all get together to review that document and just have some discussion. So with that said, I'm going to open up the conversation about this topic, for anyone who wanted to add to it, ask questions, anywhere. Because I think when we put this on, if I was understanding correctly, Terry felt that we should decide amongst ourselves, going into that joint meeting, at some point, showing some type of unified front, I believe, is what we had said, Terry, kind of finding out how we feel about it. And then Nancy echoed, I think, that we shouldn't have that discussion. So Nancy, go ahead.
I was just saying, thank you for the reminder, because I was trying to remember the full conversation that we had at the last meeting. And I think we do, I think if, I personally feel that we need to do some sort of something and present it to the Selectmen to look at that disparity in the cost between the two elementary schools. So I feel like it's necessary at this point, because we're talking about a huge, a huge chunk of money that's different being paid for the two schools.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
In my quest to hasten the conversation, because whatever I've chatted about regarding the topic, I don't, tonight, see any need in me repeating it. So I offer a motion that would capture the need, and then again, it may not, because it's really just quickly put together. If I could read it, and then someone wants a second, we can discuss it. This speaks to the elementary per pupil cost. First attempt. The Montomoy Regional School Committee, in constructing or building the annual school committee general budget, shall commit to, and this is my writing.
It's good so far.
Uh, to, shall commit to the elementary per pupil cost parity throughout the district. Let me repeat it. It doesn't say anything about Chatham or Howard. The Montomoy Regional School Committee, in constructing or building the annual school committee general budget, shall commit to elementary per pupil cost parity throughout the district. The add-on that I thought of, I should read regular education students, not special education students, where a parity, I think, would be struck based on individual student needs. So this is, you know, regular students K through four, that would seek some level of parity between the two.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody need that motion read again? Is everybody clear? Uh, Nancy, go ahead.
So Terry, just a question on your motion, are you adding on to the end, or are you just kind of clarifying ad libbing?
About regular ed students?
Mm-hmm.
I'm open to having someone insert it, if it's, if it would clear things up, so someone would not say, well, what about youngsters who have exceptional need, so.
Would you, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could you please read the motion as you read it the first time? And say, like, I moved in front of it, or I, we moved, or however?
Uh, the Montomoy Regional School Committee, in building the annual school committee general budget, shall commit to elementary per pupil cost parity throughout the district.
I like that, and I'm going to second that.
Okay. Great. So we have a motion on the floor and a second, oh, I'm sorry, it looks like we might need a repeat of the motion.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm capturing this correctly.
Yep, go ahead.
We are not including the regular education student, correct or not? All right, thank you.
Yes. Yep, okay, great. So a discussion on the motion, and did those of you in the Zoom room hear the motion clearly? Okay, any discussion? All right, I am seeing none. Oh, Jo, go ahead.
So in terms of procedures here, our motion is a recommendation. We don't make a, what we can decide is to make a recommendation. Before there is a modification in regional agreement assessments, we need the approval of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're going to need, well, the idea will have to go through the Board of Selectmen and Select Board in Chatham. I would imagine the finance committees would have a few things to say. And then ultimately, the question comes to the voters of each town. And at least in Chatham, I think in the past several years, the towns have been willing to take the direction of the Board of Selectmen to vote more often than not, as the Board of Selectmen have suggested. I don't know the situation in Harwich as well, although I would imagine the Board of Selectmen there have had some influence. So with all that, knowing that those forces have to be aligned, I think one question should be discussed, and we need to consider it perhaps beyond, I'm sure, beyond this meeting. But first off, why should Chatham be interested in this proposal? It seems that if you were to reach for the notion of fairness, well, fairness is a contested term. Every side of an issue, the word fairness, when it comes up, usually is something that benefits one side as opposed to another. If you've ever been in a negotiations meeting on anything, fairness is not a universally agreed upon idea. In Chatham, we have a density of elderly population. We have thousands of people who are older, retired, fixed income, and we're going to ask them to pay more to get what is already available, to have, to get what they already have, in order to benefit a few hundred families. At the same time, taxpayers in Chatham are going to be asked to consider, what's the figure, eight and a half million for accounts on aging. There's a number of other capital projects that have to be considered by voters of Chatham. Why this? Politically, I don't, is Harwich going anywhere? Harwich isn't going to go separate and become an independent district, they don't have the capacity for it. Is Harwich going to go hand in hand to the Dennis Yarmuth Regional District? Goodness, goodness help them if they did. So Chatham could stand pat and not change at all, and say, well, you know, the agreement was reached, and that's the agreement we have, it's just this is what it costs to align with the town of Chatham, and Harwich is still benefiting from the regionalization, even at the difference in cost. So there's a lot to consider, rather than, I think, a quick vote here today, because if we're making a recommendation, we need to be able to articulate clearly and convincingly the reasons for it. And they do have to be more than things like, well, it would be good to, or, you know, there's a difference, so that difference needs to be changed, et cetera. Keeping in mind, of course, that the idea of fiscal equity does not appear in the regional agreement as a goal or anything else. So, okay, I tried to put some issues on the table, if others want to jump in, if they, if you think this is worth talking about, please, I think it would be important to focus on some of these questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jo. Uh, Sharon, go ahead, I see your hand.
Um, I didn't know we would discuss this, but we might as well. I, I taught in Chatham for 29 years, and was a resident here for a good long time. And I know that Chatham always, before we take, we take a district, Chatham always pays a good bit more than Harwich pays for their education, so personally, I have that view of how Chatham values their schools and students, so I don't have any problem with this.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Uh, Terry?
I said I wouldn't, but Joseph, I can appreciate your stance, I totally disagree with it. I think. with it. I think, I think there is a sense of fairness that all of us reasonable people can determine when you begin to listen and read about parity, number one. Number two, you mentioned Chatham being filled with retirees and fixed income folks. There's no doubt about that, but that's a mirror image of Harwich. Thirdly, historical context. One of our colleagues in Chatham, two months ago, Jeff, I can share on a telecommunication in the working group, the historical context that brought these two towns together after 40 or 50 years of discussion. Chatham needed children, Howard needed the high school. So there was a match. But he didn't continue on with that historical context. The year before Chatham joined the region, and this is round figures, Chatham's educational budget for their kids, K through 12, was approximately $11 million. The next year after they joined, that figure went to, in, I couldn't, I don't have the exact number, but somewhere between eight and a half and nine million dollars. A net saving for the town of Chatham of somewhere between two and two and a half million dollars. Now it's 2021, that was 2012. That compounded those years so that Chatham, as difficult as it has been, with all their needs for sewage, et cetera, which mirror images Howard, netted through their good decision to join a region, somewhere between 12 and 14 million dollars. Now, the parity, I'll use that word of here at the high school, is exactly probably to a dime per child, whether it's Chatham or whether it's Howard's kids. The middle school is exactly within a dime, give or take, whether you're a Chatham resident or a Howard youngster. The uniqueness of Chatham Elementary, a school that's not growing, for obvious reasons, because of the inability to purchase homes in a reasonable level in Chatham for the past 20 years, and it seems to be growing, and their Select Board created a committee to try to address that two years ago, called the Committee of 365, with some attempts to kind of create welcoming homes, affordability to those tradespeople, teachers, firefighters, police, et cetera. That hasn't happened yet, but hopefully it could. In the meantime, Chatham Elementary children have begun to get smaller classes. We all know that. We're now down to one section. That cost, in the regional document, and that's really a 10 or 11-page item, never stated that Howard would subsidize the balance between what it costs to educate the typical third-grade youngster and what it's costing for the third-grade youngster in Chatham. There's no print at all that I've ever discovered in the region that says that would happen. What it does say is typically throughout the Commonwealth, a three-year enrollment average would take place in creating the assessment yearly. That's what's created this dilemma. And for this committee to say, yes, what is the solution, maybe out of our hands, but in order to move towards this three-group deciders, I think this committee, I'd love to think unanimity, would say, we have an issue that we can't solve. It is a parity issue, how we spend our money. We've discovered that one town, Howard, is costing four or five or $6,000 and getting even more expensive in the next several years for youngsters in Chatham to go to school, more than the Howard youngsters. Fairness or not, there's a huge irony there. It'd be one thing if Howard was paying more for their Howard kids with Howard taxpayers' money, because they wish to. So I've gone two minutes longer, but I think that's the context why I think we should say A and A, that we believe there is a quest, and it says shall, to do the best we can to come up with a general budget yearly that creates a parity. We don't say, or the motion doesn't say, how are we going to do that? But certainly, any community that had this developed over the last four or five years would have to address it. And this, I think, is kind of a better now than never, and have one of the other subgroups say to us, hey, individually, how do you folks feel about this? So in a nutshell, I think that's where I would be recommending.
Thank you. Teri, Jackie?
I agree with both Joe and Teri. I see that, I feel like we are, as a committee, understanding all of the issues from both angles. It's definitely an equitability issue. You know, we struggle with the budget every year. We struggle with Harwich every year. So I think my apprehension, and what I'm hearing from Joe, is that there needs to be, there needs to be a motivating factor for Chatham, and one would think that maintaining the education of their students and being a good neighbor is a worthy cause. On the other side, I see the struggle with Harwich every year, and much like a lot of instances in life, there is no guarantee that if we come up with an equitable exchange for the cost per pupil, that we're going to gain any ground with Harwich. They may continue to be difficult in budget every single year. So that's my hesitation, but that's life, right? There are no guarantees. I don't know that any compromise we come up with will please the town of Harwich for any given amount of time. So I just wanted to have, and Teri, if you can, and if not, if Leah, if you could read back the motion, can you do it, Teri, or do you want Leah to read exactly what she has? Because I just, I'm thinking about the wording.
She has exactly what I have.
Well, I wasn't sure. If you were, which you prefer.
Why don't we have you, before we do that, real quickly, because I just wanted to say one thing before we do that.
Well, I wasn't making another motion.
Say that again?
I'm not making another motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to hear it so that I could.
Okay, so why don't Leah read what you have, and that might be.
Actually, I was going to defer to Teri, because I did run out of ink somewhere in the middle, so I'm struggling with my handwriting a little bit, too. What I believe I have is the Montomoy Regional School District in building or constructing, I think was the first example, the annual school budget shall commit to the elementary per pupil cost parity throughout the district.
Thank you.
Did that sound, yeah, I don't know, that's right, they didn't hear it. Could, do you mind coming, all right, we're going to have Leah come to the mic for those of you in the Zoom room, just to read.
So again, I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Montomoy Regional School Committee in building, constructing, the annual school budget shall commit to the elementary per pupil cost parity throughout the district. That was the motion and the second by Nancy.
I comment in response to Jackie. No, there are no guarantees, Jackie, but with the substantial amount of money that Howard is subsidizing for the past several years, I wouldn't want to sell Howard short. Both communities are above the minimum. So Howard, for years, has contributed to their Howard schools prior to even the region. So you alluded to the fact that each year, there's a difficulty with getting a budget with what's going on in Howard. That's the truth. But I would also say, that's probably true in 95% of the communities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Partially because, in one sense, and I could be corrected, Chatham has, I believe, a marvelous, one of the lowest tax rates in the entire Commonwealth, because of obvious issues that have occurred in town where there are tremendous properties that are not getting the services, and therefore the funding that comes into the town has been far more than a typical neighbor such as Howard has. And that's, I have no problem with that. But the distinction and differentiation between the two, one, I don't sell Howard short, as far as it maybe have to struggle a bit more with our retirees and their pensions and retirements. But each year, I think we, and I've heard ourselves say, that we've created high-quality education in K through 12. So I think it's part of the nature of building a budget in all the communities.
Right, thank you, Teri. Anybody else? Joanne?
I just want to go back to where Joe was, and I hear what everybody's saying, but I just, in my memory of the, I think the first meeting we had with representatives from Chatham and representatives from Howard, the comment was made, but you agreed to it in the regional agreement. And that's why we've got what we've got. And that was just, it was a drop line, but it made me think, because I haven't been here that long. But Joe used the word recommendation. It's our recommendation. And I think that's the way we have to go. We can agree to, looking for parity, the equivalent, which is not always equal, and it's not always fair. But we can recommend. I don't think we can make a statement that has nowhere for anybody to go, because that ends the conversation. It's our recommendation, but you have to really talk to Harwich and get their input. You need to talk to Chatham and get their input, and understand where each town is coming from and why. Because I have gotten a couple of emails that have made me stop and think, is that really what you want? And that has to be discussed, and when we come together, it will be. So I think you have to leave the door open to a degree. That's just my feeling. If we come in and say, this is the way it's going to be, take it or leave it, I don't think we're going to get where we're going. And I don't think that maybe four years down the road, there'll be an issue again. So let's try and break based on what everybody needs. And Nancy, give them a hand.
Thank you, Joanne. I'm just going to say real quickly, and then Jackie, and then Teri. Maybe I'm simplifying this, but I just thought the purpose, because I think this is about us acknowledging that we have a financial inequity. I don't think our job to speak to what Joe was saying earlier is to figure out the how. We're just trying to get the parties together, to have a conversation. And I think what I understand that we're trying to get into agreement about is that we do have financial inequity, period. And that's why, on our school committee goals, that we decided we needed to establish a working group. I mean, I didn't even know why that came up if we weren't in agreement that this was an issue. And then we also had established a visiting session, which we'll talk about here shortly. So I believe, as one school committee member, that we've kind of already decided that there is a financial inequity, and we've already started to take the steps. So that's what I understand is, I believe, what Teri's offering, is this is why we want to have this joint meeting, because it's not our decision. And so, but we have to come together and bring everybody together and say, this is why we're together. Then we open up the dialogue. All right, so Jackie, Teri, Scott. Jackie?
Yeah, I was, actually, when I was talking, I was thinking, replacing committed with recommended or recommend, and somewhere in the motion, the inequitable, like establishing a smaller gap, you know, a smaller gap in the inequitable differences between the two towns, like that we're in support, like we're aware of the issue, and that we are in support and recommend that this be reviewed. I feel like we use the word commit, we commit to, well, we're not committing to anything, because there's nothing to commit to. That's when we take a vote and we move forward. We're recommending that this is an issue, and our goal is to close the gap on the, you know, so I'm wondering if we need to reword the motion, but I'm going to end it there, and then we can.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Teri and then Scott.
Just a response, Joanne, and I can appreciate the number of you, years you've been involved here in Chatham. My daughter-in-law and son are on the regional writing committee, and I had an opportunity to talk to them. Not only the 10 or 11 pages that we can all read, never was it discussed briefly or in length with the attorney's den, Ed Lennox, that if the three-year enrollment went, and 10 years downwind, this would happen. That never was brought up. The agreement for the three-year enrollment, for the assessments of kids, was part of the agreement on both towns. What's occurred was not to be expected. And therefore, I've read in the paper today, The Chronicle, someone in Chatham made the comment that, leave it the way it is, because everyone agreed to that. To my memory, that is not at all what happened. So it's, it's an issue that has been discovered and clarified the last two years, and now seeks some sort of a solution to it.
All right, thank you. Scott?
I'll do something I rarely do and agree with Jackie. No. I do think that maybe rewording would help simplify and clarify. I think that if, as superintendent on some level, I hope that this committee can acknowledge that there is and has been a discrepancy in per pupil spending at the two elementary schools, and that this committee will unanimously, you know, commit to collaboratively working with our town partners to address and provide better equity. And I think, I think if, I think if you can get there, and as a body, support something like that, I think that's going to help move this forward in both towns. Because I do think there's, you know, there's a lot of misunderstandings, you know, there's, there are some that are going to hold on to, hey, you know, we have a regional agreement that says this. And I think a body like the school committee needs to be able to articulate the, you know, the importance of having, you know, of having, you know, better equity or parity when it comes to that, you know, how the regional agreement really plays out and impacts both towns. Because, you know, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's how well this marriage of Harwich and Chatham, you know, operates, you know, in this regional school district, you know, it's that functionality. You want to see that, that be a long-term functional relationship, and not have dysfunction fester.
Exactly. Thank you. For those of you in the Zoom room, Scott was just talking that he agreed with the wording, or to revisit the wording of the motion, acknowledging, well, this is paraphrasing, acknowledging that we have a financial inequity. So I think what we're getting ready to do right now is to look at rewording the motion that is on the floor and seconded. So, and it looks like Nancy's trying to cobble something together. Teri, did you have a comment?
I would be willing to withdraw my motion, and if the person who seconded, and quickly get a better phrased one. So I think the point is well received by all of us, so.
That makes it easier. All right.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so we're going to withdraw the motion and withdraw the second, all right? And we're back to.
I have a, I'm not going to make a motion, because I don't want to go through the formality of making one and then seconding and then withdrawing. So, just cobbling together some thoughts. The Montomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint review of the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen.
I like that. How does everybody feel? Did everybody in the Zoom room hear that clearly? Sharon? You're on mute, Sharon?
Yeah, so, I like it, but I don't think that's toward the goal of creating financial equity, if that was add-on yet, because I think the goal has to, that we're working towards is financial equity.
So, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So Chair, in the very beginning, the motion states, the Montomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools.
Yeah, but it doesn't say there's a goal to fix that. It just says, we, I think what you said is, we'll just look at.
I did. I said, we recommend a joint review of the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen.
Yes, I would agree with that, if you could put, an efforts to solve the financial inequities.
From the beginning. From the beginning. Uh, okay, um, Jackie, go ahead.
Sharon, I think if you read, if you listen to the motion again, or the proposed motion, that would be repetitive of what the beginning of the motion says.
I don't think so at all. I'm full of warning.
Right, and it's an action. She's got an action item in the proposed motion. And we're the facilitators. We're not necessarily, we're not at a vote. Um, we're, we're, we're asking to facilitate and, and showing that we're, we are, we agree that this change needs to happen, and to move forward with that, to facilitate that. And that she's got that action in the proposed motion.
Did you say in there to facilitate financial equity, or what did you say the goal was?
All right, so Sharon, we'll have Nancy read it again, but I just want to add that I personally don't believe our, our goal is in the how, and I think what you're saying to me, I understand what you're saying, but I also think you're asking for an outcome, and I'm not, I, I don't know that that's our job. I think our job is to open the door, to get everybody around the table, and as a collective, decide what that outcome is. Um, Nancy, what, uh, Meredith, did you have a comment before we?
Well, I, I just, I don't know if it would help, but I, I feel like we're just one component that could come to that, come to a resolution, but it really is the towns that have to come together and, and revisiting the regional agreement that, that is going to come to any sort of.
Right.
Decision.
And I just want to remind too, because Jo, uh, said this too, I think it's important to know that this is kind of like step three, because regional agreement work group was, was a big step for us. I think it's, it's, it's time to come to the table, to have an open dialogue, make sure everybody's on the same page, come up with a solution together, because even that solution, whatever it is, in a joint meeting, isn't the outcome, because even, because that still has to go out on warrants, Des- well, Desi has to step in. So it, it's not, I don't know that I necessarily am looking for a goal, because this is just opening the door. But Nancy, go ahead.
So I think this kind of, I understand what Sharon's saying in that the beginning talks about it, but then it only says we're going to review the agreement. So we're not looking to review the entire agreement in the, with this inequity. So possibly, this might clear it up a little bit without tying us in too tightly with a, a goal. The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there's a financial inequity in the funding, in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint review of the funding agreement in the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen. So that is saying that we're looking to review that funding agreement or arrangement. I don't know. That way, it's pointing it into that specific area versus just, hey, we're going to review the entire regional agreement with the boards of selectmen.
Right, it's just a part, yeah, it's just a portion.
I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Lea.
So there, so Jo has asked in the chat that we put the language in the chat. We can't do that, um, but what I would ask that Nancy, if you could just re-
Well, yeah, I've, I've not made a motion yet.
I understand.
Yeah.
But maybe just go slowly and clearly into the micro-
So Jo, can you hear Nancy? Okay, so Nancy, do you want to?
I'm still reading my numbers super fast, sorry. "The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint review," I can add the little piece I just added in, "review of the funding agreement in the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen."
Okay, thank you. And, uh, let me ask the superintendent, do we need to say, so funding agreement, do we, does the word assessment need to be, are, are we reviewing the way that we're assessing?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
So, a view of the funding assessment.
Yeah, because I think the word, I think it's the assessment that we're trying to poke in on.
Just review the assessment.
Reviewing the, um, the assessment, uh, portion of the original agreement? Because it's about that wording, around the assessment. Oh, Sharon, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, uh, I was expecting a very minor twist, so that was very long. Could you just read that again, Nancy, maybe I'll get it seconded.
Okay, go ahead. We need your better hand in a bag, so hold on.
"The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools. We recommend a joint review of the funding assessment in the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen."
That sounds great.
Okay, that's fine.
Does that sound good? Joanne, Jo? Jo?
Uh, thank you. Um, I'd like to go, I, I don't agree with the motion that I've heard. I'd like to go further in the direction that Terri was speaking of at the very beginning of the meeting. If I understand correctly, we're recommending, we're basically ratifying what we're already doing, that we're meeting, that we have a subcommittee, we're meeting with the, uh, select board, and the board of selectmen, and town managers, et cetera.
So Jo, just.
But to what end and to what purpose? I would, I would prefer personally, a motion that says, uh, we're, we're meeting not merely to review, uh, financial inequity, but to seek measures to correct it, uh, ameliorate, or solve.
So, okay, thank you.
So that if we're going to get together, let's do so for the purpose of making a, a positive change. And, um, if I can go a little further on this, can I, can we discuss this point, or should I wait till somewhere further down the line?
Yeah, Jo, it's okay that you say that, but just for clarification, there is no motion on the floor right now. This is just suggested wording by Nancy, so there is zero motion on the floor.
Okay.
And I'm going to-
Well, I would just say, my recommendation just be take what, uh, I, I like what the idea that Scott has presented, uh, but I would go a step, I would, what I would vote for is if it goes a step further and says we, as a school committee, recommend measures to, uh, correct that inequity and bring greater parity between the towns. Uh, the comments that I tried to raise earlier really reflected the conversations and writing that I've received on this topic, partly as a result of an article in The Chronicle. Um, I had more, I've heard more about this than I have on anything from anybody. Uh, money is rarely a concern. Yes, Ch- Chatham has a low tax rate, but we have a high home evaluation. Uh, we get certain things we don't get from our taxes. We have hidden taxes, you know, we're going to have the sewer put in, if you want to connect your house to the town line, you can pay for that yourself. That's not paid for by taxes if it wasn't like town off-kick. So I, I'm getting an awful lot of, why should Chatham do this? My own answer is, because that's what a good neighbor does, that's what a good partner does, and, uh, even if the tree on your property falls on your neighbor's property, and Mass Law says that it's his problem to fix, pay for, and clean up, you can still offer to split the bill. I mean, that's just good neighbors, and sometimes that's the, simply the best policy. That's my own view. Um, I, I have to admit, I'm not finding an awful lot of people convinced by the elements of my argument. And I, uh, I do want to make the recommendation that we act on this difference, on this finding. I have friends who won't agree with the term inequity, they'll just call it a difference. But that aside, I think we should have a motion that says, not only do we want to review this difference or equity, but we want to take measures that will bring it to a satisfactory resolution, uh, for both towns. Okay?
All right, thank you, Jo. Jackie?
Um, I guess I just need clarification, and then I think that might help Jo as well. Um, what I'm hearing is that if we can replace review with something more, more of an action term, a s- more of a step, that maybe is a suggestion. Uh, but I want a clarification, because I was the one who had said, you know, I don't want to have a meeting for a meeting at the last, and so I think in a sense, that's what Jo's saying, is that this motion doesn't, this, this, this potential motion, doesn't necessarily, um, show that action. But my impression was that, as the chair, you were looking for the committee to have this on the agenda, to have the conversation, to have a unified vote of what our message is, of like what we have agreed on, not necessarily the steps we're going to take. So I'm wondering if we're just really overthinking this motion, because what I thought Tina asked for was that we're addressing the inequalities, and this is where we stand. Not so much, this is what we're going to do, but this is where we stand. And I, that's where I go back to, review might be enough in, in this one little step that we're making. I think she just wanted us to come together, have a conversation, make sure we were all on the same page. We're divided, we're clearly divided as far as how we feel about it, but as a committee, we all agree that a change needs to happen. So I just was interpreting what you wanted from this agenda item differently than I think Jo was, and so I just kind of wanted to put that out there. So you can replace review, you don't have to, but I thought this was just supposed to be a, we all agree, you know, we may not agree about this or this, but we agree about this.
Right, exactly, exactly, um, Jackie, well said. Terri, and then Nancy, you had something. Go ahead, Terri.
It's so good to put my motion in my pocket. Uh, the one thing, Nance, I would suggest, because I, I think it's, it hits the germ of the issue, and that is the term per pupil cost. That's where the inequity jumps out at the communities. So you use the term, the assessment, uh, elementary budgets, in the general term, to, I don't, I don't know where you'd fit it in, but the, the, the issue is, how, how, how does the region resolve the elementary per pupil cost in a fairer way? And I'm not, I'm not suggesting, here are my three ways to do it. Just say, but as this moves on into the two-town meetings, that's what people will want to discuss.
Um, Jackie, and then Joanne, did you have your hand up? Okay, I think she's disappeared. Okay, go ahead, Jackie.
I was just going to say, Terri, to review and resolve, like both of those words are good. To review and resolve. And I know I'm not supposed to be putting more action words in there, but I like those two.
I, I respectfully, yeah, I, I mean, my, my motion had the word shall in it.
I mean, it's like bread and butter, both together. Review and resolve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
All right. I'm going to use her review and resolve.
Okay, so Nancy, for those of you in the Zoom room, Nancy is, um, going to read some new proposed wording, and Jo, we hope you could, are able to hear this.
All right. "The Monomoy Regional School Committee."
Scott is the source.
"Recognizes there is a financial inequity in the funding, in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint meeting with the goal of reviewing and resolving financial parity in the regional agreement with the town's boards of selectmen."
Okay, oh, we've got some claps. How does that sound, everybody?
I would second that.
Okay.
Boy, I made a motion.
Yeah, okay, but before we do that, instead, does, did everybody hear that in the Zoom room? Do we need it read one more time?
Please.
Okay, we need it read one more time, Lucy. Thank you.
"I move, the Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint meeting with the goal of reviewing and resolving financial parity in the regional agreement." That doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's too much. Okay, we're-
We could, we could per pupil, clarify that.
Yeah, maybe, you know, the per pupil, I think makes it really clear.
"Recommend a joint meeting with the goal of reviewing and resolving per pupil expenditures."
In the elementary system.
In the elementary.
Level.
I just made it a whole lot more complicated.
You know, if we had it as two sentences, it might be a lot easier.
I stopped my motion. I'm not motioning anymore.
Okay, so we're not going to motion. Let's just, um, go ahead and read again.
"The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there's a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools." Period. "We request." "We recommend a joint meeting with the goal of reviewing and resolving that financial inequity."
The per pupil assess.
That's a whole lot, because-
Okay.
The per pupil assessment. The inequity and the per pupil assessment, is that too much?
Disparity of the per pupil cost?
Yeah, the disparity of the per pupil cost in the elementary schools.
Okay, there we go.
"We recommend a joint meeting with the goal of reviewing and resolving the disparity in the per pupil costs at the elementary level in the regional agreement with, with the town's boards of selectmen."
So disparity in, in, in the whole, in the whole.
So Joanne and Jo, do you want to, um, take a stab again? Uh, Nancy's just going to, I'm sorry, Nancy, I'll put you on the spot again to read this. Could both of you listen very carefully, and?
Wait, before you do that, just, are you going to settle on funding, or are you going to settle on assessment? Let's be consistent all the way through.
Yep, that's a good point, Joanne. I would say assessment, but, but I don't know. Um, superintendent?
So what if we just, if we recognize there's a fin- I'm sorry, Madam Chair, you were looking at me, and I just kept going.
It's a right question.
"We recognize there's a financial inequity. We recommend that we resolve that financial inequity."
That's what you want to do.
Okay, that's pretty good.
"So, the Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there's a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint meeting to resolve that inequity."
That sounds great. Did everybody hear that?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I got Sharon's, and Joanne, Jo, did you hear it?
And I'm fine with that.
So I make a, I'll make the motion.
All right.
Now I'm actually going to motion it. "The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools." I forgot what I said.
Go on, go on.
And "we reco- we recommend to resolve that inequity."
Is that what we said?
May I?
Oh, yes, okay, go ahead, clerk.
I believe it read, "The Monomoy Regional School District recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools. We recommend a joint meeting to resolve that inequity."
There you go.
There you go. That's it.
Okay.
Review and resolve.
So my motion.
We'll have it down.
I don't have it written down, that's where I get in trouble. "The Monomoy Regional School Committee recognizes there is a financial inequity in funding the elementary schools, and we recommend a joint meeting to resolve that inequity." So I'm not a secretary.
All right?
Review and resolve.
No, we're not reviewing, we're just resolving. That's my motion.
So was everyone good, and did they hear that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, I think I heard Jackie, just a little here before Meredith. All right, so Jackie, seconded. Any other discussion? Uh, Jo, maybe?
I'm, I'm prepared to vote for this motion, although, uh, I hope we can, I, I think Jackie's suggestion of the review is actually a point that is significant, and it should be in the motion that we vote on. If I'm a minority there, I don't want to make that a, an issue. I, I, I'm prepared to vote for it as is, but I think it's preferable, both in terms of goals, to say that we are calling for a review, for the purpose of resolving this. So I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see a review and resolve in there, as I think there are two vital functions that we need to address.
Okay, thank you. Meredith?
Aren't we already, isn't it already being reviewed, because the work group is already active?
Not necessarily, because it has in the work group, but hasn't in front of every, I mean, um, Scott and, and I actually have gone in front of the various boards, and Scott has presented. and we've chimed in, but it's not been formally with all of these entities. It's just been in the work group. So I do, I would agree with Joe that we do need to review this as a collective. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Because I don't want somebody to say, hold on a second, I didn't get the review. That's my two cents.
I think it opens the door for people to have a conversation about it before you resolve it.
Yes, that's a good point, Joanne. Good point.
So Madam Chair, nobody else is jumping in. I amend my motion to add the word review and before the word resolve.
Okay, so review and, all right, and Jackie, you okay with that for your second?
Second.
Okay, perfect. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, so we are going to take a vote on the motion as amended. Starting in the Zoom room, Joanne.
Joanne, she and I.
Thank you, Joe.
Yo, I see, hello, aye.
Thank you Sharon.
Sharon, she and aye.
Thank you Jackie.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. Thank you everyone. All right. So now, let me see, back to our agenda. The next item, continuing on here, is plans to solicit public input regarding our elementary schools. So this is directly aligned with the other school committee goal that we determined was of importance. And I'll read that quickly as it's written in our goals. Establish, organize, and lead a visioning session and/or community forum that includes a representative group of stakeholders from Chatham and Harwich to discuss an elementary developmental learning program. So I'm going to open up conversation about our plans to do this because at our last meeting on December 14th, we did agree that we do need to get moving on this. So I will offer, before we open this up for discussion, I will just offer a couple of thoughts I had. We could think about how we want to do this. We could think about a public hearing. We could think about having a community forum with an educational component prior to the discussion because, the reason I say this, is we've had a number of questions about how we pick the number of classrooms. Like, a lot of people don't understand how you can't just create another classroom. And I think that needs to probably be explained. And the other one are the pros and cons of upper lower. Because that's something else I think people need to understand. So a community forum with an educational component, explaining those two things, and then we can move into however we want to have the dialogue. We could also have a listening slash visioning session and/or we can have an ad hoc committee to lead the charge. So we can have two or three of us and I'm not sure if we form an ad hoc committee to put it together or we just decide as a collective how to do this. So I'm opening up the floor for comments.
I would.
Okay, Terry and Jackie.
I would suggest that we have a public forum, Zoom. I say this with pandemic solemnness. So, you know, we can play it out on the 11th to find out how many dozens of people will come to listen to our budget. That being said, I would suggest that we ask Scott and Mark, the two elementary principals, and I may have forgotten somebody else, to create the beginning of the explanations for this, for this forum. They would present all news, three options, a seventh option. Most of us have spent years in the business and beyond the four we discussed three years ago, I'm hard pressed as I walk to say I came up with a sixth one. So that would be my suggestion. Our team would come and spend hours during their workday to create the launching of discussions around what the two elementary school programs present to us and how could we improve them in the light of demographics and the kids. And if, I would have no problem at all having one or two members of the committee want to join that group. And then when we present a parent group, we see where that goes with parents who want to join a subgroup. Someone said we're getting in the weeds, over complicating what might very well be kind of in the period of months, some obvious decisions that have to be made that aren't that complicated with how do we make Chatham Elementary larger than it is. So, you know, it's, it's time, hopefully, that the two towns say, yes, we've got to do something and here are the options. And spend a couple of months with a couple of meetings with parents, coming up with ideas based on listening to our leadership. That's my suggestion.
All right, thank you Terry. And Jackie, would you like?
I would, I would echo Terry that I think a community forum is the best way to go with this and I like the educational component in the beginning. I'm especially interested in the, you know, how do you develop the classrooms and come up with that? It's this question we get all the time. I don't know that they'll necessarily, I just think it's, it's a good question and I think that there could be a good way to communicate it and it's a, it's a, you're going to have that captivated audience there for that specific age group. So might as well utilize that time. Actually, I like all the topics that you talked about. I don't think we should do all of them at once, but I like the development of the classrooms specifically. And upper and lower, I think is another great conversation to have. I'm just not sure if that's big enough on its own. It might be too big on its own, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone in the Zoom room? Uh, Meredith?
Just my two cents. I mean, I think the forum is great, but I, I know that we've had high participation with the, with the Zoom forums. I mean, not that we couldn't, we couldn't do it any other way now, anyway, but, but I think that that would be a great way to, a good platform.
Thank you. Nancy?
Um, yeah, I, I want to agree that I think all of what you suggested are, are solid things that we should be doing because I think they'll reach different people in different ways. And starting out with the educational session, because we do, we, we always hear, well, there's 10 kids from Harwich who want to come to Chatham, why can't, our school choice, why can't they all come? They were told no and yet the classrooms are too small and we've had those conversations. But I think it's a very difficult concept and I think reiterating that conversation. I also think that however we can, at least for me personally, I should say, not however we can, because I think for me personally, it's not my goal to close Chatham Elementary. And I think that's come across, is that we're trying to close Chatham Elementary School. And we're not trying to close Chatham Elementary School. We're not trying to close either building. And on top of that, there is challenges to having a school that has one home room of kids per grade. And I think people need to see that and they need to hear that and, you know, you could hear from, because I was the parent when my daughter was in kindergarten, who would not have wanted Chatham Elementary to do anything different than it is. There's one class at kindergarten, I don't care. That's all I want, my kid's going to be fine. Now that my daughter's 16 and I look back, there's no way she would have done well with one classroom of kids. But I, that took time for me to learn that as a parent. So I think maybe hearing different points of view would be beneficial as well. But I just, I think we need to somehow explain specifically to the town of Chatham because Harwich doesn't really have that passion about Chatham Elementary, is that we are not trying to close Chatham Elementary School. Dr. Carpenter is not trying to close Chatham Elementary School. That is not the goal. The goal is to figure out the best educational program for the kids in both elementary schools, not just Chatham Elementary. And so in order to do that, we need to figure out all the different options. And the options that were presented by the superintendent in the survey were some of the options. There could be others. I've actually thought of a couple myself. But then whether they're practical and they'll actually work, I don't know. But the whole goal is to explore those options and figure out what will work best for our two towns because we are a two-town system and we can't just say, well, it doesn't work well for Harwich, too bad. Or it doesn't work well for Chatham, too bad. We have to figure out what works best for both of them and all the kids in elementary school. So I'll get off my soapbox there.
Great, thank you. All right Jackie?
Um, the other piece I wanted to add about the public input is I think it would be important that we coordinate with and educate the Chatham 365 group, or educate and coordinate with. I think they're an integral part of the community in Chatham and I think that it would be really important for us to work with them and come up with, and maybe they're part of our community forum, but I think we need to, we need to, we need to make that work a little bit and I'm not sure in what capacity, maybe before the forum, or maybe as part of the forum, but I, we definitely need to think about that as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Joanne?
Um, I could have missed this and that's a possibility, but I'm hearing we're going to tell them this, we're going to tell them that, we're going to explain this. I'm not hearing we're going to listen to them. Because I've gotten a couple of emails, and, and it really was only three, past week. And I was surprised with their suggestions. I assumed one thing and I learned through emails that, no, that's not the way some people are thinking. And I think when someone takes the time to write you an email, they spend some time thinking about it, they spend time talking with their friends, there's going to be a listening component rather than us trying to educate them. Certainly you can answer their questions when there's an education component, but I, I just think right now, at least don't think each other. There's a, a listening part that has to happen before we have any kind of buy-in.
Thank you, Joanne. Um, Jackie?
Joanne, I agree 100% and I think one of the reasons why I really support the community forums is because it is their platform to talk to us, to give us feedback, to give us the questions. We have to have some kind of framework going into it, which is why I like the educational component. But yeah, I think, I think 70% of it needs to be the public. And 30% of it needs to be our responses and our answers or possible solutions. And I think that's also why I want to really collaborate with the Chatham 365 and have the conversation with them and listen to them and what's going on and so that, so that we can help solidify some issues and move together as, as a unified group.
Thank you Jackie. Uh, Sharon?
Possibly it could be a combination and the way I see this is if it wasn't advertised only as a listening thing, but just with coming together for this and I don't know exactly how it would be set up, but people could ask questions and we would be there and the administration would be there, like the principals of the two elementary schools. And so when something came up, for instance, why, like Nancy said, of why 10 random kids wouldn't form a classroom, you know, they might not be the same grade level or whatever, that could be explained. And so it would be, that would be the education part.
Thank you Sharon. And just to reiterate, well, Terry, go ahead and then I'll reiterate.
I agree with everything that I've heard. Lest we forget though that although this is a result of the youngsters in Chatham subtracting to a number that's creating this problem that we need to solve, let's not forget that there are 480 or 500 Harwich Elementary kids who have mothers and dads too, that they'll want to get buy-in. So whether we can make certain that proportion of parents that are carrying the load are coming to these meetings too, so that hopefully they'll agree that whatever they sent to us in the way of solutions, they too have a buy-in.
Thank you. So I wanted just to reiterate, because I opened with several ideas and what I was hearing from everybody is agreement that it's probably several things. So to go back to what Sharon said, it's not just one event. I think this is kind of a series of things. But what, but we do need to get started on something. And what I'm hearing tonight, there seems to be some, some consensus around a community forum, perhaps being the first stepping stone with that educational component because to kind of knock out the frequently asked questions. I think, because if we don't start there, those are going to come up. So let's just start there and give that frequently asked question about the classrooms and how they're formed. And then Nancy had said something that I thought might be beneficial there too, the challenges of one classroom per grade, which also I think has to be part of that conversation. And then we open it up because Joanne is absolutely right, this is all about listening. So I think tonight, I have potential vote on there and I wanted to, for us to at least commit tonight to taking that first step. And can we agree tonight on what that first step is and then move from there? Jackie?
So I move that we schedule a community forum to address the public input regarding our, our elementary schools for Chatham and Harwich and integrate the educational components we've discussed.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Did everybody in the Zoom room hear the motion? Okay, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Oh, did you have?
I just need to capture the second, it was Nancy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, excuse me, I didn't write that down. Yes, okay, so we're going to take a vote on scheduling a community forum with the educational component. So we'll start in the Zoom room with Joanne.
Joanne, she and I.
Thank you Joe.
Yo, I see, hello, aye.
Thank you Sharon.
Sharon, she and aye.
Thank you Jackie.
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. So that will be our first step. And I can come back, I guess, at the next meeting as far as dates go. Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at the calendar. Oh, Nancy?
I was just going to say maybe you can suggest dates that are not necessarily before, you don't have to come to our next meeting to schedule a date. We can schedule not in meeting format. I would just, that's, two weeks is a long ways away.
Yes, that's, that's, thank you, yes, we can absolutely schedule a date because that's, that's permissible for us to do in between meetings. So we'll do that, all right? Perfect. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is the Montomoy Regional High School Animal Welfare Club donation to Wild Care Incorporated.
This is just a request from the Student Activity Fund to make a donation of $100 to the Wild Care Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions about this? Could I have a, a motion please?
So most.
All right, Nancy's moved the motion and Sharon has seconded, thank you. Any discussion? All right, so we're going to roll call vote. Uh, Joanne?
Joanne, she and I.
Thank you, Joe?
Yo, I see, hello, aye.
Thank you Sharon.
She and aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty, subcommittee reports is our next sec, um, section and we have none this evening. I just will make a quick note that down in action items, which we will get to, we do have two policies to approve, but we'll be down there shortly. Uh, so the next item is superintendent's report, starting with recognitions followed by the COVID update. Superintendent?
So, uh, so first I would like to thank Holly for her kind words at the beginning of the meeting and probably right about now, she's probably questioning one of the superintendent's decisions. You know, so, you know, nothing like, nothing like going into a school committee meeting and, you know, getting the evening news just before you walk in the door that a winter storm's coming to the Cape. And it's supposed to be snowing during the school day, through the school day. So I, I'm very thankful we've got a great team. So while all of this has been going on, Joy's been sending out emails and Mark has been recording messages to go out to families to let people know that we're going to have a snow day tomorrow, even though at the moment it doesn't look like it's going to snow. And now I'm just now hoping that we do see snow. Yeah, so it's, yeah, yes. Yeah, so if people are welcome to join me tomorrow afternoon on the sledding hill behind the middle school. Uh, so, in, in terms of, in terms of recognitions. we'd like to thank the following. First, Cape Cod Five for their mini-grants. They gave a mini-grant to Jane Costello, five hundred dollars for her Yoga Four Classroom Program. To Larry Souza, they gave four hundred ninety-four dollars for his electronics for remote learning program. And to Shayna Grogan, five hundred dollars for her special abilities fitness for the classroom program. I'd also like to thank the Meyer family for their donation of six bags of mulch for the Chatham Elementary Courtyard Project. And thank Ms. Makomer and Ms. McGinty, the grade four classrooms over at Chatham Elementary School, for their cleanup efforts that began last week as Phase One of the fourth-grade unit cultivating change. Inspired by Seafocks and their cultural diversity study, students initiated the year-long challenge to renovate the Chatham Elementary Courtyard into a sensory garden. The garden of Seafocks empowers, relaxes, and bonds the community, giving students the idea to research and establish therapeutic gardens for all to enjoy. The courtyard will also serve as a recognition and celebration of diverse cultures within our schools. And then just other little sort of news things. I went and put something in your packets that the photovoltaic, the solar cells on top of this building, the new high school, are up and operational. And it was just sort of nice to get the little note from, you know, from Liz Argo that where once we were paying, I believe it says here, point two, or twenty, I guess, twenty cents per kilowatt hour with the electricity that's coming off the grid on top of this building now, we are paying only point oh one four five cents per kilowatt hour. Or, so again, you know, under a penny and a half per kilowatt hour. So, you know, so, you know, that environmentally green project is going to be saving us in the long haul. In terms of a COVID update, I, you know, will be putting this out to everyone as well. But we were, you know, we, over the course of this school year, have been tracking really well until about just over a week ago. We have what I would refer to as a youth hockey cluster that has not only hit Monomoy, but also hit DY and Nauset. And, you know, has seen a lot of classrooms shift from in-person to distance learning. And in some cases, schools closed because of it. So, so I actually, you know, went and with Joy's help, was just going through and going back over all of the different, the different times that we have quarantined and all of the different, you know, individuals that were identified as close contacts and the number of individuals that have, you know, that have gone into, that pivoted to distance learning because of potential exposure. As of today, we have had twenty-five individuals that were positive in in-person learning classrooms. And of those, there were a hundred and seventy-six individuals that were determined to be close contacts, meeting the CDC guidelines for close contacts, which is really, you know, being within six feet for a cumulative fifteen minutes during the course of one day, while that individual would have been potentially symptom, or potentially been infectious. Out of an abundance of caution, we have been quarantining entire classrooms and buses and sports teams. And, you know, so those twenty cases have translated into seven hundred and ninety individuals that have pivoted to remote because they have been exposed by being in those classrooms. The concerning thing is that yesterday we were informed that we have the first individual identified who has tested positive with quarantine. So now, you know, and somewhat, the good news is that we've had seven hundred and ninety individuals that have been put into, from, you know, distance learning and quarantining. And of the seven hundred and ninety-one, as of yesterday, has tested positive. You know, so the good thing is that they were out and in quarantine already when, you know, when the COVID test came back, came back positive. But that, you know, but that again, you know, one's still one too many. And, you know, so I just want to, you know, just share, you know, share with folks how, you know, we had conversations with the, you know, with the Board of Health because there are a number of individuals that are understandably anxious with that, you know, with that news. The Board of Health and the Visiting Nurse Association that does the contact tracing, you know, were in touch with me. You know, they felt that there was no need, the positive case was at the middle school. Felt no need for us to close down the middle school that because we had followed the procedures and that we had quarantined those that were initially exposed, it wasn't creating a case of further spread within the building. The other thing that, you know, that the, you know, the boards of health have also been, you know, very adamant on is that, you know, that having kids in building, in the building, and for that matter, having staff in the building, it's a safe place. If you, you know, if you look at the infection rates that we're seeing in kids and families that are in distance learning, you know, this afternoon, we got, I got an email from the high school nurse that we have a student who doesn't come to school. They're in distance learning, and they're the latest, you know, the latest individual that is, you know, that has tested positive. You know, so, you know, so the act of coming into the schools alone, you know, isn't, you know, isn't, you know, causing it, you know, causing it to be a higher rate over what we're also seeing out there in terms of household spread and spread between households in the community. You know, so the health officials, before we were coming back after the Christmas vacation, were, you know, were really clear that they felt the safest place for kids is actually in our school buildings. You know, we're going to continue to, you know, to communicate with parents and staff the need to stay home when you're sick or if someone in your household's sick. You know, clearly you're starting to see in the news, you know, more of an emphasis on having sort of quality masks, you know, to make sure that you, you know, even if you have a cloth mask, that it's a, that it's a multi-layered cloth mask, you know. Or in some cases, you're seeing individuals talking about this concept of double masking. You know, we, you know, we're encouraging at the building levels, you know, it's like, the longer that kids have been wearing masks, the more comfortable, the less of a need for mask breaks. And when those mask breaks are happening, you still see, you know, at the middle school, the kids are all heading out, you know, all heading outside. And, you know, I think, you know, again, you know, trying to, you know, trying to have, you know, follow those, you know, follow those practices, maintain social distancing, and have individuals be mindful of that distance that they're keeping between individuals, not just at school, but also when they're out, you know, out at the supermarket or elsewhere in public. You know, maintaining good hygiene and limiting one's social bubble in terms of next steps. We've completed all the paperwork for these Binax Now antigen tests. We have also completed the paperwork for pooled testing. I'm actually, I've actually sort of had sort of a shift in my own mindset when it comes to pooled testing and was in communication with our school lead nurse and our district physician that, you know, the concept with pooled testing is that we would send home a permission slips, you know, consent forms to, you know, to each family, encouraging them to participate in this pooled test, where ideally you want to sample everybody. You know, you can't, you can't go and swab the child unless the, you know, unless we have permission. But ideally, if we can get almost everybody in our building, staff and students, tested, we can hopefully identify if there are asymptomatic cases and try to use this to lower the infection rates that we're seeing here locally. You know, there are, there are cities and other towns and even countries that have taken this approach and knocked down the infection rates by sixty percent. You know, doing this for a month. The state has made pooled testing free to schools for six weeks in the February through March twenty-eighth timeframe. You know, the question is, when will things get shipped? But we're working on sort of getting everything on our end. The paperwork's all in. You know, so we're just wanting to hear when things are going to be shipping from the state and then to go and start communicating out to families and staff on that. I also put in your packets a letter that the Cape and Island Superintendent sent to Governor Baker with the support of each of our union presidents. You know, we're entering Phase Two of vaccination, starting February first. We're seventy-five-year-olds and up are first in line in Phase Two, then sixty-five-year-old and up. And the K-12 teachers are coming, you know, right after that, you know, just to sort of emphasize the importance of, you know, getting the vaccine out to our teachers soon. You know, so I'm cautiously optimistic that in the, in the February vacation timeframe, that will, you know, that will happen. But, you know, I think that will help alleviate some of the angst out there and definitely on the superintendent's end, too. The last thing I have for you in your pack is just a little flyer that the Cape Cod Annual Legislative Breakfast will be a Zoom breakfast. But it's February twelfth, and you can go join virtually for that.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Or anything he reported that was on the agenda? All right, seeing none. We will move to action items, yeah, action items, which we have taken care of everything in this section, with exception of the policies. So the first is the second reading of policy file IHBG Homeschooling. And it's in your packet. The red is what was changed last time that we all agreed. Could come back for a second read. So if I could have a motion. Go ahead, Nancy?
I move to approve policy IHBG homeschooling policy as presented.
Second? And Meredith's second?
Second.
Okay, so Nancy and then Meredith. And any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote for policy IHBG, starting with Joanne.
Joanne, she and I?
Thank you. Jo?
Jo, I see a little, aye.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon, staff, aye.
Thank you, Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Teri?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. And then the next one is, um, policy, it's file IHBF, Implementation of Educational Services in the Home or Hospital. And again, everything in red is what we had agreed on at the last meeting. To bring that for a second read. But I have a motion. Jackie?
Madam Chair, I move to approve, sorry, I lost my place. I move to approve file IHBF, Implementation of Educational Services in the Home or Hospital.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All right, Meredith has seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote, starting with Joanne.
Joanne, she and I?
Thank you, Jo.
Jo, I see a little, aye.
Okay, Sharon?
Sharon, staff, aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Teri?
Aye.
And I am an aye, and that is unanimous and passed. Thank you so very much. And we are at the end of our agenda for this evening. We are now going to move into adjournment to executive session pursuant to NGL 30A, Section 21.3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Unit A. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, coming out for adjournment only. Thank you. Nancy has moved, second?
Second.
And Meredith has seconded. So we're going to do a roll call vote into adjournment to executive session as red. Starting with Jo.
Jo, I see a little, aye.
Thank you, Sharon.
Sharon, staff, aye.
Thank you. Joanne?
Joanne, she and I?
Thank you. Jackie?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Teri?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that is unanimous. We are moving into adjournment at nine fifteen, or into executive session, coming out for adjournment only. We'll see you all in two weeks. Thank you.